The Scarborough Town Council July 17th meeting to honor. Welcome. First thing to do is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tody, a little call?
Counselor Pudier?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Foley?
Here.
Counselor Donovan?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Here.
Chairman Hayes?
Here. Good evening. The next item on the agenda is general public comments, but we do have a special guest tonight. So Sean, I don't know if you would like to come up and join us?
Sure.
Shall I start by reading it?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. Don't worry, it's short and sweet. Representative Bayvine started his public service to Scarborough 20 years ago when he was elected to the school board in 1999. He joined the town council for the first time in 2002 and has served as a town councillor for 12 of the past 17 years. Sean has served in both the town council vice chair and town council chair roles and has lent his financial background and expertise to the finance committee for the past five years. On behalf of the town of Scarborough, I want to thank you for your commitment to the town and for your countless hours of service over two decades of time.
I don't know if any councillors would like to... At this point in time, if anybody wants to say anything, but I don't know, to our colleague in here?
Yeah, I'd love to speak to this. Sean has been one of the most committed, dedicated town servants that we have ever had. He has been tireless and repeatedly running. He's carried the community's responsibilities in the finance committee on repeated occasions, which is the hardest job that the town council has, and he is very deserving of this commendation and recognition.
Anybody else? I'll chime in. I know, Sean, you and I have served on the finance committee for many, many years. Thanks for the guidance, and I thank you especially this year to come back as chair when you're trying to juggle all the other things. So thanks for all your, all your time and effort for us. Thank you.
I'm very curious how you survived 12 years because I barely got my head above water in year three. Certainly, you know, something to be commended for and your service is duly noted, and thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, Sean, we didn't serve a ton of time together, but for the little time we did, I thought you were the utmost professional and you're incredibly principled, and I, and I always respected the fact that you spoke to your principals and agree or disagree, I give you 100% credit for that.
Yeah, as the new guy here, we didn't get to serve, but you did show some encouragement when I was considering running, and I appreciate that. And, you know, we became friends on Facebook at a minimum. I have trouble keeping up with your posts, let alone all of the organizations that you're extremely involved in, not just like participating in, but really leading, and all the travels that you do and you continue to do for the residents of Scarborough at the State House. So, thank you for your service.
Yeah, I'd like to add to all the comments. I wasn't sure what to expect in terms of my first year in the council, first couple of months in the council, working with Sean, you know, acknowledging that we probably had different views on a lot of things, but I grew in a short period of time to really respect him in terms of him living up to his commitments to the council and setting a great example in terms of, you know, how to deal with tough issues with diversity of opinion. And he was always very respectful and encouraging, and it's one of those occasions where, you know, you get surprised by the outcome, you know. I liked him a lot better than I thought I would.
Give me time.
So again, thank you, Sean. And I think with that, as in the next agenda on public comments, Sean also wanted to just kind of update us on some of the things that are happening in Augusta and whatever else he'd like to share with us tonight.
So if I can actually talk to the honor that I have tonight in receiving this, this is the first time in 20 years I've actually spoken on the side of the podium, so I'm a little nervous, believe it or not, and at the same time, very humble. Over the last 20 years, I've served with, I actually figured it out, 27 different town councillors, 31 different school board members, because I do consider them co-equals, five superintendents, and three town managers, and only one town clerk. And I really want to say thank you to all of the people that I've served with because it's an extreme honor. Service has always been about finding the time and responsibility to do what is necessary to make a town a little better. I grew up with a stepfather who was an extreme influence in my life, who was a road manager. I'm sorry, he was the, what's it called?
Commissioner?
Road commissioner. He was road commissioner for 50 years in our hometown, and so I grew up with that kind of commitment in the background, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, and especially Tody. You've been an incredible person for me personally, and I really want to say thank you. What people don't really realize, and I've always said thank you to the others, it's not about us who serve in that seat, no matter what board it is, including the sanitary district, it's about the partners we have in our life who led us to that. And so my wife, Terri, is here tonight, and I've got to say thank you because it has been an incredible journey, and if it wasn't for her. Back in the day, before email and before social media, there's always the good old telephone call that we would get at 11 o'clock at night, and a lot of citizens would call that late and yell on the screen, and she would try to be polite as much as possible to say, "But he's still at the town council meeting." Believe it or not, back in those days, we would still be in a town council meeting at 11, 12 o'clock at night, and she's like, "Turn on the TV and you'll see, he's still there, you can't take the phone call." But you learn over the years, and I just want to say thank you to her and to my daughter, Olivia. Olivia was six years old when I first started. She's 26 now and actually a legislative aide in Congress, so she definitely got something from the family tree. She's on the other side of the aisle, which we won't talk about, but extremely proud, extremely proud, and I want to say thank you to all of you for that. And as far as, enough of that. I've got to say that in our first year, and I do, I actually did have a chance to talk to Representative Chiazo, he sends his best wishes as well in what we wanted to give as an update, and we've got, we have to at least say that we're extremely pleased with the work that has been done this past year with the help of a different governor and the accomplishments that we've had, and we think that our promises have been kept. Medicaid expansion has gone through, $126 million in new educational funding was part of the governor's budget. Main revenue sharing, which is the most significant piece for Scarborough since we are a minimal receiver on the educational side of the Metta Homes, they put it into the formula, Scarborough won't receive anymore, is extremely important. We didn't get to the 5% that is statutory required, but the 3.5% was an extreme, a big jump over the original proposal. In fact, what we estimated for the town of Scarborough was about $512,000 additional dollars over the prior year. In addition to that, our work, President Chiazo's work on the EUT or the energy utilities and technology has really focused on the impact of such a many power to the entire state as well as broadband, which is part of the economic strategy that I'm looking at, as part of the IDEA committee, although I actually joke and call it IKEA, which is I know everything already, it's a nice struggle, but IDEA is really talking about economic development, how we can transform that, and broadband is a big, big part of that, because people don't realize that while rural Maine has very little, southern Maine, like Scarborough, is very challenged, if not pick up your cellphone and just simply try to call some nights when you're on the coast, because it's extremely challenging. So a lot of that has happened. The bigger piece that both Chris and I actually champion together that impacts the region, we are talking, we do try to look at regional solutions that you should be aware of, and I know Counselor Hamel is probably aware of this, from Maine, is that Chris and I champion a bill that actually allowed solid waste management to be included with the RPS bill that was proposed by the governor and the energy office that really allows us to address the deficiencies within the bill and state statute regarding solid waste management, and that in itself could lead to anywhere from $250,000 to $500,000 for a regional solution. Scarborough's portion is based upon its percentage of ownership in the domain, but it's a significant, significant win for us in the sense that it addresses the shortfall that the recycling market has had on our community and all of our partners, which are, you know, just about everyone around Scarborough, you know, South Portland, Cape Elizabeth, and Gormon and some of the others. And so that has been a big part of our effort. If I remember looking at the numbers correctly, both of us took an approach that we wanted to at least sponsor one bill and make that our focus, and then look at our partnerships and where we can develop relationships with others through that advocacy, and I think we were very successful. Chris sponsored approximately 40 to 50 different bills in addition to his one. I did the same, and focusing on a different portfolio of interests ranging from women's access to health care to changes to, what's it called, MUBE, MUBE, which is the municipal, municipal codes for our code enforcement and other pieces, and so it's been a lot of work and we love it. I will tell you, I apologize for not being here earlier. The last meeting in June, which I was planning on being here, was an all-nighter at the State House. It was an interesting experience, and all I got to say is that if you can imagine what it's like, it's the scene from the Animal House movie in which Dr. Lucy comes downstairs and takes the guitar away from whoever's playing it and wants to smash it. He smashed it to get, because they had guitars and they were singing, and I'm like, oh my God. But it's part of the experience, and you have to smile and you have to laugh, but that all comes in due time with the hard work that we had, and I really want to say thank you to Scarborough for the time that I've been able to serve and the time that I'm able to serve now in the state legislature. And I do want to mention, Chris and I have really focused on what I'll call a dual relationship in Scarborough as a representative, as representatives, and that is that no matter where you live in Scarborough, while Route One kind of splits our districts, we try to provide the same attention, whether you call me and you live on West Scarborough Road or wherever you live, same thing for Chris. We're here for Scarborough as a whole, it doesn't matter that, that boundary, and we hope that everyone takes an opportunity to come visit us. It is the people's house, and we honor that very distinctly, and I want to make a promise, because over the last 20 years, I've seen a lot of legislators, and I remember Harold Cloud and Glenn Swobodt and some great people that have served, no matter what their party is, and the one thing that both Chris and I want to bring back is that we promise to you as our colleagues that you are equal. We want to share that stage with you as well as with the school board, we will not interfere in local politics. However, if you ask our advice on how it applies to certain facts of our state, we will be happy to give that to you personally, but we want to make sure that you understand that our door is always open as legislators, and I just want to say thank you. I'm really glad, by the way, that the three-minute clock came back. But in the end, we really want to say thank you, and we have a very joint promise to you and a commitment that we want to do what is best for Scarborough as a whole. I will leave you with one piece of personal advice as a legislator, but also as a former councillor. You know, we talk about revenue sharing, we talk about a lot of formulas, a lot of the things that happen at the state level. I would strongly recommend to the council, if you could, look at the contracts that is with the Scarborough Downs, the former Scarborough Downs or the Downs, because one of the things when we talk about revenue sharing that impacts the formula that what you receive is the total valuation, and what you put into a, sort of, you put into a reserve or that you protect makes a significant difference. And as we have a new commitment to providing that reimbursement through reserves, the more option, the more valuation that you can shelter will lead to more money that you can receive, because you're not going to receive it on educational funding, you will receive a number of the sharing. And so you're at the early stages, but once that takes off, the more you shelter, the better off Scarborough will be long-term, well after all of you have served, you know, it'll be one of the best policies that I think that you have done and I hopefully will have advocated as a legislator. So please take that into consideration, but in the end, I just want to say thank you. I can't look at her, so I'll cry. Thank you, Terri, very much for what she's allowed me to do. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And with that, that kind of opens up to public comment, just one housekeeping item. I think when we did a roll call, Jean Marie's on vacation, I understand, so she's not here this evening, just so the minutes reflect, but she let us know she wasn't going to be here this evening, as she's, she's away, right, or she's exiled?
Islanded, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. So, just the minutes reflect, but so for public comment, anybody that wants to speak to anything that's not on the agenda this evening, they're welcome to come forward and give us some public comment if they'd like. Would anybody like to have public comment at this point? Seeing none, we'll close that up. Item six on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. We don't have any this evening, or, oh, the minutes, excuse me. So the item five is the motion to approve the minutes from the June 19th meeting.
Still moved.
Is there any discussion, comments, edits? With that, all those in favor approve the minutes? Thank you, it's unanimous. Item six is adjustment to the agenda, there are none tonight. Item seven are items to be signed, treasuries warrants, I have done that. Then the first order of business is order number 19041, which is a public hearing and second reading on the proposed changes to chapter 405, Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance, section six. And with that, I'll turn it to Larissa, who is also, Tom Hall is on vacation this week with family in the Cape, I believe. So Larissa is going to guide us through the process tonight and get us out of here an hour, she has said, so.
No, Tody has said.
Oh, Tody has said that, okay.
And we do not contradict the town clerk, ever. Going to go ahead and actually toss this over to Bill as the liaison to that Affordable Housing Committee, if that's okay with you, Bill?
Certainly.
To speak to that.
The Housing Alliance identified an issue with, with how its housing was defined. It was determined that we needed a small word change to go from two units to one unit. It's a technical change, and this is second reading, I believe.
Thank you. So with that, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve this?
Still moved.
Any discussion, questions?
Second.
Second, oh, second, sorry. Any, any discussion, comments? All those in favor? Seeing none. The next item on the agenda is number 19049, public hearing and second reading on the proposed amendments to chapter 302, Scarborough Town Council Rules and Procedures, section 300, subsection 304. And again, with that, Larissa, you want to?
Sure. So this is coming to you from your Rules and Policies Committee. They workshopped this language over a few months' worth of meetings, and it, Bill, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. Counselor Katerina wished to speak to the legislator, legislature, at a hearing some, several months ago, and we had a discussion at that time that determined that it would be appropriate to have a policy for how this would be handled. The Rules and Policies Committee looked at it and created a relatively simple policy proposal, which is, and I'll read it, it's section 304, Town Council Policy on Publicly Speaking as a Representative of the Town Council as a Body. Councils wishing to speak on behalf of the Town Council or as a representative of the Town Council as a body shall present a resolution expressing the content of any public statement to the council for adoption by a vote of five of its members.
And the, the discussion at length was regarding what vote that needed to be taken by the Rules and Policies Committee after a couple of months, kind of going back and forth, voted unanimously to not hold a standard of unanimity in that vote and to go with a, what they defined in their meetings as a supermajority. The language of a vote of five of its members is to be consistent with other town council policies that require that same sort of supermajority as opposed to a simple majority.
And again, with that, is there any public comment on this order, this issue? Seeing none, I can have a comment? Motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion, questions? Seeing none? Bill?
No, it's pretty straightforward matter, and it's just, it's a simple process for allowing any councillor to put on an agenda a draft resolution that could be considered, and it just formalizes a process that needed to be formalized.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just add, it was, it was great discussion, and I think, because this has come up two or three times in my three-year tenure, and this gives people real clear guideline around how to go about, about doing that.
And I had the opportunity to sit in on part of the discussion around this, and I want to say hats off to the, to the Rules and Policy Committee for their ability to come up with, you know, economical and very clear wording for something that was not really uncomplicated.
Anybody else? If not, are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Then a new business is 19050, second reading on the request to approve the expenditure amount not to exceed $90,721 from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund for the purpose of purchasing a portion of the Blue Point Congregational Church property. And again, with that, Larissa?
Sure. So this is coming back to you, it was discussed by this council at the last meeting in June and had unanimous support by the councils that were present in that first reading. So this is just going back to you for your second reading and action on this item.
Again, on this item, is there anybody that would like to speak to this in public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Would someone like to make a motion to approve this?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion, questions, comments, by the way? Counselor Foley?
I did threaten to vote against it because my sister didn't show up this evening to speak. However, I'm happy to support it, I think it's, it was great work done by everyone involved and happy to support it.
Anyone else?
A good job by the Scarborough Land Trust to work through some of the issues that were involved with neighboring properties, and I have to really applaud them for their dedication and commitment to preserving Scarborough land, and this is one of the first times we've gotten a piece of land in the Scarborough Marsh near, not Pleasant Hill, near Pine Point. So, I fully support it.
Beautiful piece of property.
Sorry, yeah, I, I agree, I think it's an exciting acquisition, I look forward to using it, and just wanted to remind everybody that this depletes the account for, or the referendum bond that had been allocated towards land acquisition, so that's something that we need to keep an eye on if, if it's something that we want to put in front of the voters again.
Good point. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. The next order for new business is number 19052, Act to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2020's School Budget Resolutions as Required by the State Statute. And again, Larissa?
Yes, back to me. So this is just the final step in the school budget process, you do this each year as kind of a codification of the vote that the people took back in June.
And again, any, anybody from the audience like to speak to this? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. Any discussion, comment? No, I think it's pretty straightforward, so all those in favor? Unanimous. The next order is order number 19053, Act on the Quest of the Posting and Action the Names to the Various Committee Board as Recommended by the Appointments and Negotiating Committee, and I think Negotiations Committee, and I think, Larissa, again, if you want to.
No, I think actually I'm going to toss this right back to you as the council chair that makes this official nomination for these posts. We've got someone for the Coastal Waters and Harbor, Liam Erickson, the full voting member with a term to expire 2020. Oh.
No.
Tony's whispering something to me.
I know, it was actually Don's chair, so I think Don.
Oh, sorry, Don.
It's okay. Continuing along, three, three recommendations for appointment of, for approval by the council. Liam Erickson is a full voting member with term to expire in 2020 to the Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee. Denise Smith as the first alternate with a term to expire in 2020 to the Senior Advisory Board, and finally Jennifer Waters as the second alternate with a term to expire in 2020 to the ZBA Zoning Board of Appeals.
So with that, is there any public comment on these proposed appointments? Seeing none, I'll close that. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Second. Is there any comments, discussion, additional conversations? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. The next item on the agenda, this might take a little bit of explanation, but it's order number 19054, Act on the Council Chairs Committee Board Appointments, which...
This would be the one that I was...
This would be the one. And we're going to make a slight change to that, and I'll explain a little bit. We did get some questions from a fellow council, Counselor Pudier, I'll chime in. We're there, they actually asked some great questions about our process and how we do things. I think they were great questions, what we have had some discussions, what we've talked about doing is between now and when we do the next committee assignments, which will be after the fall elections, to have this go back to rules and policy, just to look at our processes and to answer some of the questions, get a legal opinion about what we should be doing, how we should be doing. There were some very good questions asked, so it's great for us to reexamine the process, so we'll do that. And I think tonight, there is a motion to maybe amend the, the main amendment, so as we go through this, I think that's the introduction. Is there any public comment on this issue? So I think what we need to do is make a motion to approve the original motion, then, then vote.
Still moved. Second.
Any discussion and comment on the original?
So, I can try to elaborate, sure, a little on what I saw. I'm the new guy, so going through it for the first time, I might look at things or see things that raise questions, because I haven't done this for 10 years, and...
Fresh pairs of eyes, that was good.
Exactly, so I was reading through our rules and procedures and noticed some guidance that was listed there for committee selections and assignments, and the discrepancy that I saw that has been a standard practice for us, that over, I think, a decade is, is what I heard, was that the way the rules read could be interpreted that the chair is automatically an ex officio member of every committee, and when we list the chair as an individual or regular member of a committee that creates a duality or a conflict, or it confused me, is, is basically, so that's why I asked a question, I don't have an answer for what the right way is, and I think the recommendation to send it to committee and seek guidance on it is, is good, both in terms of how it reads and, and then clarify how it reads, so that it either conforms to what our practices are today or what we want them to be, so. That's all.
So thank you.
Sure. I'm glad I could create some excitement this week.
That's true.
It was a slow week, yeah.
So with that, the, the original order, there was a request to kind of change how we, how we did that to officially name all the members of the committees as kind of being ratified tonight as they exist to dust. That would be the amendment, I don't know, if you want to introduce that.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce that amendment to the main motion then, if I may, which reads as follows, move approval of the following... Move approval of the following council chair committee and board appointments. Finance Committee, Councilor Hamel as chair, Councilor Johnson, Councilor Hayes. And Communications Committee, Councilor Foley as chair, Councilor Clutier, Councilor Hamel.
Is there a motion to?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, comment? To all those, yes, councilor?
Just thanks to those, you know, we have new members who are offering to take on more responsibility. I think that's great, Don, offering to be chair for the balance of the year for the finance committee, which is always a heavy lift. And I, I really applaud your willingness to serve, so thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Johnson?
I just, I actually want to thank Counselor Clutier for actually bringing up, I thought he had some great observations about the language. We went back and forth over email a couple of times, but I, there is a little nuance there that I think's worth exploring and I'm glad that somebody flagged it and I think this is a great opportunity to, to bring it back to rules and policy. And I'm going to miss my communication committee, but besides that, thank you, John. I thought it was a good conversation so far and I'm intrigued on what the end result would be for, for us, so.
So with that, is there a motion, is there a vote for any other comments on the motion to amend? No, if not, all those in favor of asking unanimous. Now we're back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. The last item on the agenda is 19055. It's Act on the recommendation of the Scarborough Housing Alliance to utilize funds from the Affordable Housing Initiative Fund in the amount of $300,000 toward the Bessie Commons Two project and authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents related to this order. And I will turn to Larissa once again and I think we'll have some others that will fill in some of the information.
Yep, I was going to say, certainly happy to turn this over to Bill as the chair of the, of the liaison, rather, to the Scarborough Housing Alliance. I also want to acknowledge that Marge DeSantis, who I believe is chair of that committee, is also here, so Bill, if you want to go ahead.
Sure. This is a matter that's been before the Housing Alliance. Marge DeSantis is the chair of Housing Alliance and is here with us tonight and I'd ask Marge to go up and present to us what is before us.
And just a point, I think, I think there was, we did get a letter with some questions that came from a constituent, but I think you're, graciously you're prepared to kind of address some of those things, so.
First, I'm going to go back a year and Bessie Commons Two was proposed for state funding last year and the town authorized, through the Housing Alliance, the town authorized $100,000 towards Bessie Commons Two last year, which would give them one extra point in the state, main state housing holdings, but they were not able to get funding. So one thing I want to point out is we do want to ask for an additional $300,000, which would make the total $400,000 for a 40-unit project of all affordable housing. And not only do they meet the standard of affordable being 80% of AMI, which is the area median income, but Bessie Commons Two is actually going to achieve 60% of AMI on average, so it might be 50 or 70, but it's on average going to be 60%. So 40 units for $400,000 is only $10,000 per unit, which is well below what we put in our RFP. When we first prepared our RFP, two, three years ago, whenever it was, we had put a cap of $20,000 per unit. So to be able to get 40 units all at once for a $10,000 per unit contribution is actually, I guess, the best bang for the buck is what I'll say. Most, most developers, and this was somewhat of the questions in, that were posed by the public, most developers do not want to build affordable housing. Their requirement is 10%. So, so they might, if they only did 10 houses, they'd only have to do one affordable. And it's easier to pay the in-lufy, which is why we altogether have gotten over $1 million in this, in this initiative, is because everybody pays the in-lufy. Or they don't want to put affordable like Gateway, they were doing high-end apartments, so they didn't want to do affordable, so they paid the in-lufy. Or maybe they have, you know, 30 units, but still they don't want to do the affordable, so they pay the in-lufy. So we have had a few affordables, Carrier Woods did a couple of affordables, but for the most part, no one has responded to the RFP and we haven't been getting our affordables in the town of Scarborough. So when this project came forward, which is 100% affordable housing, not only at 80%, but at 60% for only $10,000 per unit, the committee fell, I mean, they didn't even ask for the total amount. We upped it to $10,000 per unit in the committee because this is what we're, we're saving this money for. This is the whole purpose of those in-lufys that some developers pay, that we give to other developers to get this, to get the affordable housing into the town. So that, that's how we're, how we thought of it in the committee. We were saying, you know, it's, we've got this money and it keeps growing and growing because nobody's putting in, I should say nobody. We've had some affordables, but the majority of developers pay the in-lufy. We don't disperse the funds unless they're, the project's approved. So last year, even though we suggested and were, and were confirmed $100,000, it never got dispersed. It never went anywhere because we don't disperse them once the project's approved. So one of the questions was, would you get the money back if they weren't approved? Well, we don't disperse any money, so they don't ever get the money. It always stays in our pot until everything's approved and they're moved forward with state funding. And then another question was, you know, to describe the, they want to give preference to Scarborough residents. Well, you can, you can give preference if you have two equal people come forward for one apartment and they have everything the same. And one's from Scarborough, one's not from Scarborough, you could pick the one from Scarborough. But in, in many other ways, you can't give preference because it would be discrimination. If you say, oh, you're from Stanford, you can't live here, I mean, you can't do that. So even though Bessie Commons will give preference and a lot of the people that apply are from Scarborough because they want to stay in Scarborough, they're not all. And, and because of the laws and housing laws, you can't prioritize and just say, we're only going to give these, these places to Scarborough. So I do want to make it clear that once that, once Bessie Commons Two is built, it's just going to be like Bessie Commons One. People will apply for these units if they meet the, the income criteria et cetera, et cetera. That's how it's going to go. They're not, you know, like I said, had two exactly equal ones for one apartment, you could give preference to the Scarborough, but that's not really going to happen most of the time. Most of the time, you're going to have people come in and you're going to have to, you know, give the apartment to one who qualifies. The other, the other question is about leaving the money there and letting it grow for a while. Well, we haven't even had any requests for this money except for Bessie Commons. We used $100,000 since we started this project several years ago for a BESTA. We used $100,000. We have, I think altogether now, 100, 1.2 million. And leaving it there in the hopes that someday another party would come forward, we have talked about how to market our RFP, to try to get our developers to come here and say we want, we want to use somebody's funds and we'll put in affordable housing, but we haven't been successful in this. So for $10,000 per unit, we can get 40 units at an average of 60% of AMI. And we thought that was a pretty darn good deal. And that's why the Housing Alliance voted unanimously to bring this forward to council. So it's, it's not to let it sit there and wait and hope that somebody else will come forward. We think this is a good use of the money that came in from developers for this purpose.
Does anyone have any questions? Councilor Johnson?
Could you, could you just quickly speak to the, the actual, the marketing of the RFP that you sent out this time around?
Yeah, well, we did resend it. We just posted it on, we posted it right on the front page of the, the town website. It's off to the right, I believe. We contacted all the regulars, the developers that come into town, you know, that work in Scarborough frequently. We had, I think it was Kevin Bunker came in and talked to us about a project and, you know, some others, but they weren't looking for any money. They just were talking to us about how do you do affordable? I mean, Rocky Pusser has been into how do you do affordable? And the problem with how do you do affordable questions from the developers is it has to stay affordable for like 30 years. And so they kind of find that as a growth lock if they have both market, market rate apartments and affordable apartments and they're building on the same scale. In other words, they're, they're not cheapening the, the quality, it's the same exact building. And then they have to maintain that 10%. If one vacates, you know, it's, it's a juggling act. And so that's one reason why it's not, so they've come in and asked us a lot of questions and we've written descriptions on how to do that. We've actually put out a spreadsheet for them. If you put in these numbers, you can kind of figure out if you're going to sell a unit, how much you can sell it for and say marketable. You know, so we've done a lot of work with them, but none of them really looking for building a vast number of affordables. They're trying to either meet their 10% or paying the in-lufy.
To follow up on that, are in-lufys too low right now?
Yes, and we have discussed increasing the in-lufy. It is $20,000 per unit right now. We're going to go to $50,000, I think is the recommendation, but I don't know that it's ever come to council yet.
No, it hasn't.
It hasn't. Okay. So our discussion in the committee is $50,000. And Portland is $100,000. So based on pulling it out the air.
Correct. Yeah.
So we're, so we're thinking that, we thought $50,000 was reasonable. We did some calculations different ways and we came up with 50 came, came right in that ballpark. Several different ways we did it.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
This is kind of a sidebar to that, do we have to do the in-lufys? Have you talked about not doing it at all and just requiring them to actually build out the units?
The 10%.
Yeah. I mean, if it's a real struggle to get them to do it and that's what we're learning, you know, is it better just to say that there is not that option? I mean, has that been a discussion point?
Well, there, there isn't an option in certain zoning areas, I believe.
Crossroads.
Crossroads, yeah. Crossroads didn't have a choice. We do, so we will get our affordable housing in, in the Crossroads project. But, you know, when you went to, with the one on High District Parkway, it's called Gateway. Yeah, I mean, they were high-end condos and, and they clearly didn't want to put affordable in.
Oh, they didn't?
And, and people willing to take their money and like to use their money and use it for Bessie Commons because it's, it's, like I said, it not only meets our, but it meets our standard exactly at 60%. So I think at $10,000 per unit, it's, it's a good deal.
So, Don? The city of Portland, everyone was aghast in this affordable housing industry when they said $100,000 was the buyout cost. And having had a fair amount of contact with the city manager and the chair of their town, city council, everybody pays the $100,000. So that tells you, and, and the, and the reason is, it's not easy to do affordable housing development. You really need to be in that business.
Right.
And even at, at Piper Shores did not want to do it. Beacon did not want to do it. The Downs has entered into agreements with people who are in this business to do it because they don't want to be in the business of doing it themselves. So it's an, it's an interesting circumstance that we've learned, do business with people who do affordable housing and, and that, that's the best.
And that's why, and that's why the housing initiatives of New England, which does Bessie Commons and the BESTA, are two that are doing affordable housing solely. They're just, that's what they're doing. And so they know it. They know it inside and out and they're not trying to juggle market rate apartments with affordable apartments in one complex. And how do I do it if I vacate one and then I have to keep turning down people until I get another affordable person applying? Or can I put a market person in there and then put an affordable person over here? You know, as long as I still beat my 10%. So it gets complicated and, and then when they want to sell units, that's the rental market, but when they want to sell units, how much can they sell them for and still call them affordable? And that, we did a spreadsheet for them so they could put in the numbers and figure that out. So we're trying to help the developers as much as we can and we're trying to encourage them, but like Bill said, even when it goes up to 100, they'd still rather pay it than try to do affordable.
It's here. Councilor Hamel?
So I, my questions kind of go on a slightly different path. I mean, there, nobody's questioning, you know, Housing Alliance of New England, Housing Initiatives of New England's commitment. We went through a very thorough discussion of Bessie Commons Two, you know, not more than a month ago. However, you know, to be following that, following that approval, to be looking at another contribution, you know, for, you know, four times the size of the original contribution in total and 40% of your total budget for Housing Alliance. It does raise a question a little bit about, well, this may be the only game in town and the only true player that's committed to low-income, senior housing. However, you've highlighted in your own letter, there are some, you know, very serious issues you've got with profitability. You're trying to raise another $2 million in equity to make the project.
Oh, sorry, you're saying a housing initiative.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And also the, the fact that, you know, there's a shortfall of about 1.8 million in funding made up of, comprised of additional site costs and sanitary fees and building permit fees that the developer has highlighted. So, so my question is, you know, this is a big commitment, a big decision. If this were a capital request, this would be out in front of the town for town-wide referendum by voters?
It isn't technically taxpayer money, though. This is money we got from developers.
Yep.
So it's, it's infused from another source.
Right.
And it was, it was set up to be for the purpose of contributing to developers to help with affordable.
Right.
And we did have Cindy Taylor come to the Alliance meeting, the Housing Alliance meeting. And we're aware of all the additional costs that have come up and are still shortfall. And that is one reason why the request that she put forward for an additional $200,000, we upped to an additional $300,000. Still saying it, it's still much lower than what our cap was in our RFP, which is $20,000 per unit. This is only $10,000 per unit. So we found that it was still, and if she doesn't, and if the housing initiatives of New England is not successful with the state of being, then the money doesn't go anywhere. It's wasted money.
So, so my question was, so when did they find out? Do you know when housing initiatives found out they, they were not approved for state funding?
Last year.
This was last year and now?
It was last year.
So then?
Yeah, so they have, they don't know that yet, this year. But last year, I'm not sure the timing, Ken, do you know the timing of that?
But the thing, the thing I'm trying to drive at is you've identified a deficit that we try to, that we want to fill by putting the housing allowance monies in that direction. And so why, why didn't we cover this when we were going through it a month or so ago? Why are we, why is this additional request before the council now? Is it a timing effect of, of the Housing Alliance? What exactly is the reason for that?
Until, until it was an approved project, she wouldn't have come forward with a request for funds. In other words, you, you work on a project first, you get it approved and then you come and ask for a contribution from our committee.
Okay.
And so that's just the process we go through.
Yeah.
And last year we committed 100 and then she didn't get the, I shouldn't keep saying she because it's, it's the initiatives, the housing initiative, didn't get the main state housing approval. And this year, I don't know what may see how the approvals command you.
So walk in for a minute?
Oh.
So we submit and then they give us, and the last one was a competitive round. So the 9%, this is the 4%. So it's a different structure, which is part of why there's a difference in the finances. Sorry. I was trying to. I'm sorry. I was trying to avoid this. I was really doing a good job. I understand the possible. So there is a difference in how the deal was structured?
Yep.
And the importance of validity of the deal, which I think is sort of your question, right?
Yeah, I mean, is it going to be, is it going to be a successful deal, number one? Number two, the other, the question related to this is the timing effect. If we knew all these things, if we knew all these things, there were issues before us or before the Housing Alliance, it's four weeks ago, then why didn't we air them then when we had a workshop? And, you know, why are we doing this now?
It's kind of happening at the same time. So we put in the application at the same, about the same time that we're also putting in the application for the tip. The tip is a requirement of the four percent. So in order for us to then put the application into main housing, we had to have that in place. This is a thing that we would really like. That's not very exciting, but like, it wasn't necessarily a requirement of that. And so, and what ends up happening is that whatever we can't make up in this funding with them, we put in ourselves. So that's how the deal gets structured.
When you say we put in ourselves, the Housing Alliance?
Housing Initiatives.
No.
The Housing Initiatives, yeah.
Yes, yes. And they, it has been mentioned to us that they would take it in many different places. They have, how many places do you have? We have like twenty seven. Twenty seven different locations of these kind of projects. So they might borrow a computer to pay fall, kind of thing. You know, so we saw a need.
It just might be helpful to identify, because you're with, you're...
Sorry, I'm Hannah O'Neil. I'm with Housing Initiatives.
Okay, so we have two different entities after the point. Okay, just for everybody watching at home, I just thought it might be helpful.
Okay, yes. Hannah works for Cindy Taylor.
Yes, okay. Hannah, is there a concern because the state application was rejected that the project is less attractive to your normal bin of investors that you guys go to?
No.
Okay.
It wasn't necessarily rejected on the ground.
It just lost.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
In points, in points.
I got it. It was unsuccessful. Yes.
Yeah, but it seems to be going well.
But there's no concern that this is, this project is less attractive to your typical investors you bring in?
No.
I think part of the issue is that the application was part of the nine percent program last year.
Last year, yeah.
The four percent program is one that Cindy Taylor told us at the Housing Alliance meeting, there was a much higher likelihood of being able to meet the standards that are established to get the grants and funding from, and tax benefits from the state and federal government that allows the investors to come in. She was specifically asked the question, will this make your proposal more attractive, more likely to be able to go forward? And the answer was yes. So I think that's what I perceive, sitting there, listening to the Housing Alliance consider how to advance this, that they felt that the opportunity was lost last year. These opportunities don't always continue to just exist. This is a long-term lease of municipal property. It's right where we want it. And so I think all those factors and improving the chances that this deal would be able to come together was what motivated the Housing Alliance to propose what they did.
That, and I would just add about the areas of people that need affordable housing are the age spectrums. The young people coming into, you know, I graduated high school here, went to college, and now I can't afford to live in Scarborough again, you know, those, that event. And the older people. And so I'm sure Cindy Taylor talked to you about the waiting list. I last I heard it was like 300 or something and she's building 40.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. So, you know, but it's well above what they're even going to build. So those two age spectrums are what we need to hit. So Carrier Woods did some affordables. I mean, they only did like, I think there's six apartments over there that are affordable. But they're, you know, affordable for the younger group. And this would take care of 40 senior groups. And those are the age groups that we find need the affordable housing more. Everybody needs it to some degree. But the young ones and the old ones are really the critical mass that need affordable housing. And so this fit right in with what we were trying to do, was getting affordable.
Counselor, would you, did you ever...
Yeah, so I'm fascinated by the topic of available housing and affordable housing. And to me, affordable is, it's kind of on a spectrum, right? It depends on the income that you have. And in Scarborough, and correct me if I'm misstating anything, because I'm really trying to understand it. We, being a relatively affluent community, not having as many residents that are at the 60% of median income, on the nine percent point system, we have a very difficult time qualifying against other projects in other parts of the state like Sanford and whatnot because they have more residents that are in deeper...
We have a lot of residents that would qualify.
We have residents that would qualify. I'm wondering about the point, the nine percent versus the four percent?
Oh.
The two credit programs.
There, the plus of the four percent right now is that it's a senior, it's more senior house. So that's our major draw to it right now. And because they've released the bonds finally so that there's money in that account. The nine percent splits its needs between senior and family. And depending on what they've decided in the QAT is the priority, points are shuffled, right? So it changes every year. And Scarborough is not always being the most needed community. It is pretty high in it, but it doesn't, we don't always win all of those points.
So we kind of have to compensate by... By pouring more of our own funds in to make the project viable, right? And then the other question I had was, I know you have a number of projects and some subsidize the other because overall you're a nonprofit. Do you expect this project to be self-sustaining or generate a surplus or a deficit? Do you have a...
There you go. Just in time.
I'm sorry, I thought the agenda was, you know, a lot of land, really. This project will be self-sustaining. That's not a problem. We're actually taking money from some of our projects going into overall, you know, but it is a stretch. I mean, today we got a site number that is 350,000 dollars higher than we expected. That's just the site. So our numbers are coming in. In four weeks, we'll have another number for our home building. I expect it to be 25% higher than our budget. And then we're going to find other sources. But this 400,000 dollars is so important to us. And I don't know if you had another question?
Well, you answered that one, but then that's, part of what I'm trying to understand as well is that once you get approved for the four percent program, that you're going to be able to go out and find investors to...
We, no, we find the investors first.
Okay.
We're working with TD Bank and several other investors right now. So they have restrictions on us to, I mean, they will not make, allow us to go forward without having an operating budget that works, without having adequate resources to lead the whole project. So I don't think, I mean, this will be sustainable with that. It will be anything different than anything else I have done, will be different than Bessie won, and it will be as simple as that. So I won't let it happen without doing that because this is my hometown. This is, this is the new one to affordable project.
So Cindy, welcome back. I know you've answered a lot of questions over the past couple of months on this project. And, you know, thanks for coming back. Thanks for being patient with us. I mean, nobody disputes the need. Nobody disputes the ability of your entity to do this. The question I got is, you know, our commitment of 400,000 dollars, you know, where does that fall in terms of your ability to get, you know, investors interested in?
All of the other funds?
Yeah.
Huge.
Yeah.
This money is so important in the hierarchy of our project. And so we worked diligently with TD today, you know, today, and they're waiting for this. So this is another key component.
So just shifting gears a minute, though, if we're looking at trying to make funding decisions as a town and this is an issue that's going to be in front of us and it's only going to get bigger and gnarlier and tougher to reconcile with everything else that we're deciding on, how do we rank this, rank this investment of 400K in this particular project with other things that are likely to be coming?
So you might should get away on this, but if I can just say to you, I'm the only one responding to an RFP for these funds. We are an organization that is committed to affordable housing. And we have so many people looking over our shoulders that for you as a community to put this money in, you will not have to do the, you know, due diligence annually because we have investors who have main housing. We will have so many people that will be looking at this as a development. So from the town standpoint, you are going to get 40 units of affordable housing. And we have, I mean, I think the last time I was in front of you was a couple of weeks ago. We closed our, we closed our list for our marketing. And then we overdid it. We had 65 people in a week. We are up to 95 today. So the demand out there is so key. So for you as a town to think about putting money into this project right now so that we can serve the people that need it, it's not people that can wait, it's people that do it right now. So I'll let Marsha be to that, too, because she's a strong...
And yeah, I guess I can't say anything new other than what I have said. We have over a million dollars. The developers are finding it difficult to do affordable mixed with market, which most of them are a market with 10% affordable kind of driving the growth in. So we just keep building this fund. So we really need to work with developers that specialize in affordable housing like Housing Initiatives of New England and Bessa. Those are, those are two that just deal with affordable. And it makes it so that we can go forward and be sure that we're going to get what we intended these funds for when they started coming in.
Counselor Foley, I know you were trying to...
Is everyone else all set? Yeah, I have several thoughts and comments. There were several things that resonated. I mean, one thing that I've been thinking a lot about since our last meeting, and I think it came from that end of the table in that room, I think it was Bill or Jean Marie who said it. Because I asked the question, you know, I was just curious, how many, what's the percentage of Scarborough residents who lives there?
Can I try to answer that and you got the answer?
Yeah, well, yes, but what I want to share is my thinking and how it's evolved since then. Because I was looking at that, in my opinion, very wrong, right? When someone moves to Scarborough, they're all our residents. And that statement, again, I'm not sure where, who it came from, but it's, but it's all of our, they're our residents here. And so we're not a bubble trying to keep people out. And so doing projects like this, if it attracts people from other places to come here, great, fantastic. I recall when I first started in the council, I think there was less than a hundred thousand dollars in this fund. And we now have over a million. That's amazing. And we need to be using it. So I get that, you know, we want to be careful of process and mindful of things and how we're, you know, vetting projects and whatnot. But I also want to, I mean, I also know a huge need that I see in our senior population. And this is going to serve that population extremely well.
I don't see any, I don't see any long game in saving it for right now.
No, and not, agree.
I think we have a great project in front of us and we need to assist wherever we can with that project.
And I have one more point that I really want to make. And this isn't necessarily pertaining to this project, but I hear people talk a lot, again, about how challenging it is and how complex it is to do inclusive models. And I will never, till the day I die, stop advocating for that. Because when you think about so many different, the best analogy I have is my own story, right? So I was a handicapped child. I was not allowed to go to, think about this. Not allowed to go to a public school in a big city because I was going to be on crutches. Because teachers and the staff and the institution at that time couldn't figure out how to help me, right? And I know that's a big leap to say that, you know, how do you do this? But inclusive models of affordable housing can happen. They can be done. It is complex. But I would encourage future counselors to always, especially where we have the leverage like we did in the crossroad zone or in contract zones. Because I don't want to ever be, and it goes back to my, that first resonation of thought around all of our citizens, I don't ever want to be that place that excludes or that it's, oh, that's where the poor senior citizens live and this is where the wealthy senior citizens live. That's not the kind of town that I want to live in.
And to that end, we have tried to write more specific rules or kind of calculate it and how to figure it out so that if you are doing both affordable and market rate, you know, we're trying to help developers understand how to do that and how to keep it...
They'll get there. I believe they will get there. But they will only get there if we continue to push them because if we just sit back and we don't, the bottom line profit margin will take over as it usually does money.
And by raising the amount of the in-loof fee,
Oh, yeah.
it was just too easy at one. It was just too easy. And so making it, making it 50, hopefully it'll hurt just a little bit more and up that they'll maybe double think it and actually do some affordable. But meanwhile...
Meanwhile, let's vote yes.
Yes, so does anybody have?
It's really, it's very, very difficult. I can't tell you how difficult it is. It's more difficult today than it was when we pushed it. And I don't think it's going to be easier because of the high cost of construction. But the demand is so great. And I will get there. I've got a couple of challenges in front of me, but this 400,000 dollars will benefit to get to the next one.
So does anybody have any more questions for the experts that are in front of us tonight? We're good? Thank you very much. So with that, that was kind of the introduction to it. Does anybody, we'll open it to public comment. Does anybody have any comments on this particular issue? Seeing none, we'll close by comment. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Jacob? Any discussion, additional comments by any of us?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry. You're looking at me. Counselor, I was here.
I'll take you guys over to school.
I thought, I thought there's several things that are important here. One, Cindy Taylor is a Scarborough person building affordable housing in Scarborough. And this is a rare, rare circumstance. There just aren't a lot of people with this sort of expertise and skill and financial wherewithal to pull this off. The 400,000 total is going to materially assist her in this renewed effort to get Bessie Commons Two off the ground. And I'm glad we advanced this to the July agenda because building costs are skyrocketing. And the faster we can allow Cindy to deal with the state, achieve and the bank to advance this, the better. And the sooner we'll have a better assurance that Bessie Commons Two will be built and we'll all be very proud of it as citizens of the town of Scarborough.
Sure. I will say, when I look at Bessie Commons today, it doesn't look like affordable housing. I think it's really helped to bring back that area or this area of town and has generated economic development around it. And I think that's a big part of the reason why you do these projects. It's not just for the 40 people you're going to help, it spurs activity around it. It's too bad that it's taken so long to complete the project. And I think it's a matter of the economics of doing something like this, particularly in Scarborough. So I think overall, we need to, like Counselor Foley was saying, I'm a huge advocate of an inclusive model, but also think about other ways that we might be able to accommodate people who want to relocate to the area and provide for affordable housing. And I think this is one tool that is necessary for us to pursue. But I'm hoping that we can think outside the box and come up with some others and maybe engage the business community to really take ownership. I mean, we have a shortage of housing and a shortage of workers. And to solve that, people are going to need to get involved and step up and try to provide solutions to it. So I support this and thank you for bringing it back home. I appreciate it.
Counselor Johnson? Yeah, I, just speaking specifically to some of Counselor Hamel's concerns, as far as spending 40% of the budget that's currently in there, the 1.1 million, I think...
as spending 40% of the budget that's currently in there, the 1.1 million, I think, I'm looking at that more of a, it's not necessarily putting all our eggs with one player, it's, it's a per unit. And we're getting, to me, this is 40 units, $10,000 a unit. It sounds like the RFP was going as high as 20, so to me, we're 50, we're paying 50% at what we were willing to pay. So, this isn't, to me, although 40% of the total budget might sound scary, it makes perfect sense to me. It's about getting the units and the units you hear. The only frustration that I would share, and this is not, this is not a major point for me, just internally, I think that there was a, we did workshop about 200,000 and then 300,000 was on the agenda. So, I do, I don't know where, and that was clearly in our packet, so in all fairness, it was right down in our packet. But I just think as a counselor, when I sat through the workshop with Cindy, we were clearly talking about 200,000 and today we're talking about 300,000. Totally support it, totally on board, but just, just as a, a point of, I can understand where some, it might have caused a little bit of confusion or friction. But that aside, I'm fully in support.
Well, I just thought you said that the Housing Alliance Committee meeting increased.
Correct. Right. And so, I didn't watch the Housing Alliance meeting. Right.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. But you're, I completely understand. Yeah.
Counsel Hamel?
So, in spite of my questions, I'm in favor of this, but I have concerns. I, and they turn on this whole topic of true costs. You know, we talk about true costs for impact fees, you know, the true costs of, you know, the investments in projects like this. So, it's, it's not just the 400,000, you know, in total that we're going to be, the housing allowance will be, Housing Alliance has recommended unanimously that we, that we give to Bessie Commons Two. I mean, I, it, it's, you know, it's, it's the dollar a year lease for 99 years. It's a TIF and a CEA we've created. It's not paying taxes. It's the fact they own the building at the end of the timeframe. There's, there's a lot of factors in there and I do, it does kind of, for me, raise a question. This may be the only way we can do it and we may be blessed because we, you know, have an operator and someone who's totally devoted to that. But I, I don't get a good, comfortable feeling that there's enough line of sight into, you know, how we fund and how the Housing Alliance just, you know, disseminates funding. You know, this, and I tried to look back at minutes, we haven't had minutes in a while. The, the meetings are not typically televised. So, I, I just think from a process standpoint, it'd be a, a good idea for us to get a better, better idea of the flow of activity. And I know this is a boom and bust business, right? Building is, you know, you, you build when the demand is there and the funding is there. But I, I would like us to give some thought to having, you know, a little bit more line of sight to, you know, how the funds are flowing so that we don't get surprised. And whether the number is 100 to 400 or 200 to 400, you know, it's, it's a swing and I, I can honestly say, and I follow this stuff pretty closely, you know, it seemed like a pretty, pretty big surprise and a sudden agenda item. But all of that said, I'm in favor of it.
Anybody else?
And I guess, I guess where I'll weigh in too is I, I'm in favor of it tonight, but I, I think there are some good points even going around the table and I know we've had pretty good luck as a town council doing workshops to kind of get on the same page. I sense there's some differences in thoughts about things. I think there were some rich conversations about what should we be doing about the in-look fees? Is it, is 50 enough? Is it 100? What do we want to accomplish? I think we should talk about, I think Counselor Foley's is, is a great point about, is there something we can do differently? Can we do it inclusively? I think that's important. So, I think if it's okay with this group, I think maybe a workshop and then maybe come back and relook. So, we do have that line of sight. We have some more clarity around what are our goals? What do we want to do? What's, what's the right sort of model to pursue? So, with that, anybody else? Final comments? I think we've gone around, so I, we're ready to vote, I think, for all those in favor? It's unanimous?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item nine, non-action items. I don't believe there are any. Item 10 is standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. I'd start at that end of the table, John, I don't know and.
Sure. Well, I'm not, I haven't been on any committees. I'm happy to join the communications committee effective today, so I, I look forward to that and providing an update here. But are you going to go around and do general comment as well or are we just going to cover?
At the very end.
So, I, I sat through a couple of committee meetings and, and was able to learn a lot through the experience, so it was good and I'll cover the rest during final closing.
Okay. Counsel Johnson?
Yeah, for Communication Committee, we canceled the July meeting, so I really don't have much to report out on that. And, but I do know that in the future, on the horizon, we do have the $10,000 that was allocated in the budget to explore some sort of survey or at least bring in perhaps a third party that might help us engage with the residents more or more effectively, I should say. So, I wish the Communication Council Committee luck on that. Although I'm not the chair of the Finance Committee, I would like to say I appreciate you guys welcoming me aboard. I do, I do think the, the work over the summer, that I don't foresee us voting on anything, so to speak, so I'd like to open it up and anybody, any counselor, anybody just come and sit. I think in, if I'm not mistaken, it's a lot of debriefing about the budget season that we just experienced. So, the more the merrier when it comes to collecting thoughts on what we could do better, what we did great and what we can improve on. So, I look forward to just being part of the debriefing process for the next couple of months and just kudos to Dawn for, you know, it's easy in the summertime to take the summer off, which by and large we have and I'm not complaining, but I do think that this is important work to do early. So, you know, my hat's off to him for, for taking that initiative.
And I was going to say summertime and living is easy. No, no meetings since our last meeting, so, and that's my, my fault because I did miss one Conservation Commission meeting due to a scheduling conflict.
Counsel Don?
Yeah, I had no formal, I'll cover in council comments.
Okay.
The things that have actually been.
Counsel.
I would like to thank Counselor Cludier's questions on various things. I can, I have to admit, when I read the email at first, I wasn't so happy about it, but the more I thought about it, reflected on how I started in the council and I thought that, you know, you know, it's a good way to start, questioning and asking questions and trying to verify things. And I think that ends, I'm encouraged by the, the way the council responded to that and are going to try to improve on areas where there are opportunities. So, I would encourage him to do that and I think, think we do a pretty good job of that as a council, so keep that up. I'm quite confident that he'll be assigned plenty to do in a short order. So, the other thing I'd say is that on the Finance Committee, we, we are looking forward to a joint workshop with the School Board Finance Committee on July 24th. We're taking our regular monthly finance committee meeting for the town and devoting it exclusively to that effort. So, there won't be any other business items. We're just going to debrief, we're going to do start-stops and do differently and it's purely idea generation and, you know, we promise not to try to jump ahead to problem solving. So, we'll probably do that in, in August and September. But we look forward to coming back probably in a September timeframe for there to be a joint workshop before a town council meeting that would have both the Board of Ed and also the, the council there, both Finance Committees.
Did you mention it's, it's next Wednesday night at 5:30?
Yeah, July 24th at 5:30 here and everyone is invited. And it's, you know, I've got to, I, I've got to give credit to the folks on the School Board. You know, they do all their own work, you know, they deliver, they're really believers in process and I have discovered, hanging around with teachers, actually if you pay attention, you might learn a few things. So, I'm looking forward to that.
Great. Couple updates for my committees. Coastal Harbor did meet. They are still tinkering a little bit with the mooring ordinance, so there should be some things coming back, some minor tweaks on, on some of that. There was some conversation, there was a question that I have passed on to the town manager and staff about at the co-op, there's a, there was a new handicap wrap that went in place and there was some question about just was that appropriately placed? That, that was on the list. The striping of the parking lot, I understand, is done down there and I think the rumors are that it's, it's working out well. Good news is so far that the, the co-op that we did have the conversations around, things seem to be working out well down there, kind of both and, both parties are living up to their agreements. On the Shellfish Committee, there was some interesting conversation. I'm glad to see actually, it's really interesting, there's going to be a joint collaborative volunteer, but all the coastal communities are going to start coming together as a Shellfish Commission to talk about joint issues, talk about predators. Some of the other things, a real great example of it is our, our Shellfish was really trying to change the lottery process on how our licenses are put out. They want, they call it the Boost Lottery is what they're trying to do, but they, they now have gotten documents from a sister town that has gone through the process and they are realizing, starting from scratch, that the legal cost in trying to change that particular thing is difficult. They're just going to adopt another town's language as sort of the blueprint. So, they're starting to collaborate across the coastal community, which is a big plus for that, for that group. Some new young leadership, they're doing well. And the other thing they do is there's a minor issue around that the, the oyster farm just wanted to change some of their gear on the bottom, which, which the Shellfish Committee could, could approve. So, that does it for me on updates of committees. The next item is the Town Manager Report.
That's me.
That's you? That's Larissa?
Yeah. I just wanted to kind of let people know about what's happening on Route One right out in front of Town Hall here. So, that is a project that's going to be lasting through next Friday. It's a, they're laying the gas lines that are connected into the new public safety building. So, they are out there from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 at night, 6:00 at night. They are keeping a mindfulness towards our commuter traffic, so you will see that in the morning, they will maintain two northbound lanes at all times and one southbound lane and then the afternoon during commute hours, that will reverse to be one northbound and two southbound. So, we are definitely trying to keep traffic flowing. Monday was the first day and unfortunate on many levels, there were a number of accidents on 95 that day between exits, between our exit and exit 45, that we routed a lot of traffic, so we had a lot of complaints coming that morning. But that's what's going on there and that will wrap up hopefully by next Friday. Also, another road project that we do hear a lot of from residents is the Gorham Road Project. Right now though, things are moving very quickly, changes are happening daily. That phase one of that project, they expect to wrap up by mid-August, so people should be really seeing some significant changes there and, and hopefully feeling that their, their stress caused on that commute has been worth that. Quick update on the residential revaluation. So, our firm that we've hired for that KRT, they have finished all of the callbacks. That process is now complete and we have KRT representatives out in the field. If you still see their vehicles driving around, they're simply doing a field review that they will complete in the next week or so. Value notification letters will be heading out to residents on, at the beginning of August, so residents should be looking for those in their, their mail. That will let them know what their previous town assessed value was, what the new assessed value for their home is. There will also be instructions in there about how they can come and speak to representatives from KRT if they disagree with that value. And so, that process will be set up and those meetings, those hearings is what we actually call them for valuation concerns will take place through mid-August, but we are on track to wrap up this project and be ready to commit taxes by the end of August, per usual. So, a big, huge shout out to our assessing staff. They are a team of three and a bit. We have a, a part-time person that comes in and they are just, they are just hitting out of the park. They're doing a great job. Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, I just want to have a quick question. Do you have a date yet for those KRT hearings? I'm just thinking it's summer, it's August.
We don't have a set date because we, we don't know for sure when the letters are going to go out and we want to make sure we have enough time, but it will be within, we will have multiple nights and days available so that people's schedules can be accommodated. It will take place over a two-week period. So, that if people are gone for a week on vacation, there still will be another opportunity for them to commit.
That was one of my concerns.
Yep, we want to be really sensitive to people's schedules. We know it's summertime and it's not ideal, but in some ways summertime is ideal because we want to make sure that those seasonal residents that are here with us only during these great months also have an opportunity to meet with representatives from KRT to express their concerns.
Thank you.
So, and then there, just as kind of a public announcement, if you meet with KRT and there isn't a resolution to be had there, residents do have another, another grievance process to be had. Once tax bills have gone out, residents may seek an abatement. And so, there's, that is always a resident's right to be asking for that abatement through our assessing office. So, the KRT hearings are to meet with the assessing contractors to talk about what they saw and what's on their property card versus what the reality may be in that home. But then if there's still not resolution there, residents still have another space for recourse, which is through the abatement process. So, stay tuned. We've got a long fall and winter kind of coming up ahead of us, but really super impressed with our team that we've got downstairs. If you've got a moment to stop in and just smile at them kindly, that would be nice of you in the next month. And then finally, speaking of departments that are just hitting things out of the park, I hope that people have seen these posters hanging about. It's also on Facebook and on the Community Services Instagram account. So, it is Parks and Rec Month across the country and our Community Services team are just always amazing. It's one of my favorite spaces to spend some time. They're just great people and they have come up with a whole calendar through the month of July to encourage people to get out in our public spaces, to get out and try new things. Some of them are a bit tongue-in-cheek, like shred the gnar at the Scarborough Skate Park and some of them are a little bit more perhaps accessible to everyone's mental space, just visiting the Audubon Center on the Marsh. So, just really encouraging people to get out. But then above and beyond that, they've set up four special events at Memorial Park that are free and open to the public. Tonight was supposed to be one of them, but the weather forecast pushed that off until next Tuesday. The 23rd at 6, 4:30 PM, game on in the park and we'll have pickleball stuff out there and cornhole and volleyball and lots of great activities to bring your family to and yourselves to and enjoy. And then yoga in the park on the 24th and that will all wrap up with back-to-basics workout on the 29th. So, please come join our Community Services staff and celebrate the good work that they're doing.
All right. Item 12, you have your counsel member comments and I'll start down with Counsel Hamel.
Yeah. I, the pace is decidedly slower in the summer and I think that's a welcome change. At the same time, I think there's an opportunity to get a few things done and I'm, you know, looking forward to going to Marijuana Symposium, I think on the 21st.
Yeah.
Looking forward to that and a few other things. So, we referenced the finance activity. So, there's still, you know, a couple of things for us to kind of knock out of the way and still get in some golf and tennis, so thanks.
Yeah, I mean, it may look like it's quiet for, in many respects, but there's a tax exemption lawsuit by public, by Piper Shores that Tom Hall, the town manager, and I have worked with our lawyers extensively in recent months. They are complicated legal issues. There is a lot of money at stake and we have a plan and we are executing it. I'll probably be able to report more as we proceed, but it's, it's very active at the present time, but I'm confident about where we are and the, the position we've maintained. People have been asking, what can the region do to help with the asylum seeker emergency that has occurred? Tom Hall and I regularly attend the Metro Regional Coalition meeting. I chair it, been chairing it the last couple of years, I think almost by default. They have a really exceptional executive director by the name of Christina Egan from, from Freeport. And when this crisis occurred, the emergency occurred, Tom and I talked and we decided that rather than leaving it solely to the city of Portland to try and figure this out, that since the Metro Regional Coalition represented the seven communities that surround and make up greater Portland, that this would be a great organization because they have a great leader. And so, we went to Christina Egan and asked her if she would entertain this as a project and she embraced it. And we immediately held an emergency meeting. All of the Metro Regional Coalition communities, Falmouth, Yarmouth, Gorham, Westbrook, Cape, South Portland, Scarborough, all attended, all to get marching orders on what we can do. And we started looking for affordable, for housing, temporary housing. And that has been one of the key steps that the city of Portland has asked us to do because they have to get the 100 to 100 odd people out of the expo by early, mid-August. And so, that's been, that has been advancing and the Metro Regional Coalition, this is Greater Portland Council of Governments, has really taken on a leadership role, been very proud of, of the way they have turned to with their staff. It turned out that as this project went forward, we were talking about where can we find temporary housing? John Cludier suggested that he talk with Christina Egan, which he has done so. Their, John's interest comes from the fact that he owns a hotel that is a seasonal hotel in the, the town of Old Orchard Beach. And seasonal housing was perceived as something that if we can get people into families, homes for a for a month or two or three, and then do seasonal housing starting in the fall, when all of these facilities, whether it's Saco, or Old Orchard Beach, or Scarborough, they all close up, hundreds of them close up. So, that's been the initiative that's been going forward and it's, I was very pleased to play a small part of organizing that. Edge Sports and Scarborough Downs are advancing their analysis of the need for sports facilities at Scarborough Downs. A number of counselors, John, Paul Johnson, Katie, and I have been very interested and involved with it. The Scarborough Downs and Edge people have advised the town that by next week, they're going to be ready to come back and talk in more detail as to what they envision the scope might be and what our role might be, and then we'll go from there. So, this project is alive and well. Behind the scenes, it's a big deal because it would advance the downtown portion of the project from the seven to eight-year horizon that was expected to something dramatically sooner. So, kind of exciting, I find that to be very exciting news. And we'll report more on Scarborough Downs in the next month. They're back in front of the Planning Board for their industrial zone permit approvals, and it seems as if everything's going very well.
Thank you. Counselor Foley?
Yeah, I do have a few things, actually. So, record number of fledgling plovers this year, 27, I believe, was in the last report across our beaches, so job well done by all the monitors and folks being mindful of the cute little guys down there at the beach. It seems like we just got here, right? It was January, February, then March, 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 and then now it's mid-July. And it's going to be, so Summer Fest is going to be right around the corner, and I can't remember the date, but I wanted to throw that out there because we only have one meeting in August.
August 16.
There you go. And that's, so before we even meet again, August 16, Summer Fest, come check it out. Also, I'm glad you gave a shout out to the Parks and Rec. I did drive by and saw over 60 people appear to be participating in a Zumba class out in the park, which looked to be having great fun. And then, last but not least, I wanted to mention, because again, we blink and time goes by, but there will be two council seats open this fall. I will not be seeking reelection. And so, those papers come out again before we meet again, so those would be available for you, Tony just told me, August.
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday, first Wednesday in August, August 7th. So, and how many days do they have to turn those back in?
They have to have them back by first Wednesday in September.
Right, so, August, it's like 30 days. And so, it does sneak up on you, it comes fast, and so those, I would say, you know, if you've had an interest, call any one of us, we'd be happy to talk about it. You should absolutely do it, you learn a lot, your eyes get open to a lot of things, you meet some amazing and great people, and I'm very glad I did it, and I'm going to be very glad to step back and focus on my family. So, there you go. Agreed?
So, I just have three quick things. Number one, I was wise enough to go to Pine Point Beach on July 4th. However, with that being said, I did get a, I asked for and received a very thorough tour of the, with the police officer that was on duty, which was very informative for me. There were, I believe, there were somewhere between seven and nine tickets that were on windshields of people that were parking in the dirt parking lot in the co-op that were not supposed to be. So, it was very encouraging to take that tour. It seems like the feedback's been fantastic all the way around and it looks like the enforcement, the presence there is very obvious. In fact, while I was on the beach, which was, we go to the secret beach, the Little Beach, where the co-op is, and many-
It's not secret anymore.
Yeah, right, yeah, right. Many people around me were talking about all the upped enforcement, they didn't know where it came from, so I just pretended like I didn't know anything. Secondly, this is to change perhaps Counselor Foley's idea of not running again, I believe there might be a discussion worth having about dogs in Memorial Park.
I'll speak to you from that side of the podium, don't worry.
Just thought I'd float it out there, I just wanted to create a little bit of awareness that I believe because Memorial Park is incredibly beautiful and finally being utilized more and more, I foresee that we have some sorting out to do about what is appropriate dog usage at Memorial Park. So, Katie, maybe second, you know, think those papers you don't want to take out. And then lastly, the Community Center, the Downtown Committees, I believe we were charged to form those by September, if I'm not mistaken, and I know Tom had mentioned it about two or three months back, and I know we have some exciting fact-finding still going on with the Edge Sports Complex, but I did want to say publicly that I believe that we have some sort of responsibility to address the fact that these committees were to be formed by September according to the CEA agreement. I think I have my facts right on that. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few things this month. I was able to, kind of not being in a lot of committees, sit in on a lot of committee meetings and meet with staff. I was able to sit down with Karen Martin from Segco and learn more about what she does and her group does to help small businesses, which I was really encouraged by, it's something that as a small business owner, I certainly could have utilized about 10 years ago. You kind of get bogged down, it's overwhelming because you don't have a big staff to do stuff when you're running a small business. So, they have a lot of techniques to get you thinking about things that you may not have thought about when you're thinking about going into business, and then they also get involved when larger companies want to come to town as well. So, I learned a lot from the meeting, I met with Chief Thurlow from the Fire Department, got a tour of that building, found a number of fire code issues, but he acknowledged them, and so we're glad that the new building is being built. Also, met with Nancy Crawl from the library, took a tour there, and was able to understand some of their pain points a little bit better as well, and a lot of the history, which there's a lot of history with the library in multiple locations. I was able to sit down with Chairman Hayes, and as it turns out, we actually have some factors in common. I used to have a camp up in Auburn, and he has a longstanding, five-generation family business that was there that I was a frequent customer of, so I know his family reasonably well.
Small, small world.
It really is, it really is. So, I did have a couple of constituent calls that I'm going to track down with town staff. I'd like to congratulate Scarborough Softball for being selected as the Press Herald's Varsity Main Girls Team of the Year. They completed their third consecutive undefeated season, which is simply mind-blowing. They won the state title for the third year in a row and have won 60 games in a row. I wanted to comment a little bit on the housing theme from this week. To me, it's not just affordable housing, it's housing in general, and I think if, as housing becomes more available, then the affordability piece starts to be solved. There's a shortage of housing in this region, and there's a shortage of workers in this region. I feel it very strongly as a business owner, we need a highly inefficient, multi-pronged approach to try to bring workers to the area, for the summer for me, but also year-round. It's a struggle, not a lot of people want to move to Maine that are working age. And I said this earlier, but I'd like to challenge some of my fellow business owners to be a part of the solution for this problem and to find creative housing solutions that can help bridge the gap between where we are now and where we need to be based on the demand for workers. A couple of stats that I looked at, or one really, is our senior ratio, which measures the proportion of working-age residents or people to seniors. And it's an interesting statistic that's been changing over time and we expect it to continue to change. In Maine, the ratio in 2017 was 3.2, so it's 3.2 working-age residents to every senior. In 2032, we expect it to be closer to 2, more like 2.1. That's a dramatic shift. On top of that, Maine is, has a very low ratio relative to the rest of the nation. The national average is 4.5. In 1950, it was almost 8. So, that's really going to create some issues for us locally as well. In Scarborough, our ratio is 2.4. So, we, we're going to watch that, or I'm going to watch that as it goes, but I think for me, it really underscores the need to bring workers to the area here. It's going to be critically important in the coming five to 10 years. Thank you.
And I guess with that, wish everybody a happy summer, or hopefully the nice weather continues and we will see everybody in August. With that, motion to adjourn?
Salute.
For all those in favor. Thank you, everyone.